First part of this is gonna be the work session. Item number one is a public hearing, the rezoning request by John Dobbs, Harrelson County Tax Map, zero zero five five A dash zero zero three five, located on US Highway twenty seven and Ten Oaks Road. Present zoning is R two, proposed zoning is C G B, Commercial General Business. Is there anybody here that wants to speak for this?
Yes.
Come on up. It's been a day or two.
Maybe, maybe not.
All speak loud.
Speak loud.
Appreciate y'all having me out tonight. Uh, my name is Charlie Stewart. I am here on behalf of Sullivan Wyclie. We are a developer of Alera. Uh, we are under contract to purchase the proposed piece, uh, to rezone. Uh, we are hoping to build a new ten thousand six hundred forty square foot, square foot dollar general. When we initially, when Mr. Dobbs initially submitted this application, we were not in talks yet to purchase the property. But since then, uh, that has changed, so, uh, that's why it's not mentioned on the agenda. This is gonna be one of the newer stores, uh, with, uh, larger footprint, wider aisles, cooler doors, all that. Um, I think, you know, we've built a couple in the county in recent years and, um, it sounds like it's, uh, been a pretty solid response from the community. And we think that this is, uh, a good idea for it, 'cause, uh, you know, this area, they have quite a drive, either direction, whether it's to Freeman or Cedar Town, in order to get, uh, their convenience items and groceries. Um, you know, the closest thing would be Terry's, about five miles. I'll keep it short, but open to any questions from y'all.
You have any question? Thank you, sir.
I appreciate it.
Can you go and see if anybody else signed it?
No board for this item.
Okay. No bet, nobody opposed either.
Well, they, real quick, and you can just answer from where you're at, the entrance to it will be off Ten Oaks or off twenty seven? Okay.
Is it a regular Dollar General or is it one of the market Dollar?
The regular one, which we updated.
Okay, okay.
Item number two is a public hearing regarding the zoning ordinance of Harrelson County to update the minor and major subdivision ordinances. Did anybody sign up?
Yes.
We have one, Bruce Goldsmith.
Yes, hi. I had a chance to look over it, um, a little bit, and I think it's really good that the county wants to create a plan for how subdivisions happen. In nineteen ninety-eight, there was somebody planning near me on building, uh, sixty homes in a little over seventy acres. And, uh, the way I stopped that at the time was to buy that acreage, and I started looking at dividing it into what you would call a minor subdivision with five acre lots. And there was somebody on the planning commission at the time who was later involved in helping to design the zoning for the county. And he said to me, you know, maybe we could do something a little different that would actually keep what it is that we have here in Harrelson County that attracts people, and that's the rural environment. So, together, we came up with a plan that was later approved, although after I put in the roads, I stopped, uh, trying to market that. And the plan was that on that seventy-nine acres, we would put in thirty homes and leave thirty-five acres as a nature preserve that would be part of the homeowners association and belong to those people there. Uh, it was just too soon. Nineteen ninety-eight was too soon to do something like that. Um, what you have planned here is an either-or situation. Either people try and put as many lots as they can into the property, and then they're forced into a curb and gutter situation with sidewalks, which may not, according to some of the goals here, uh, that could actually cause more pollution into the streams, et cetera, because now it's funneling all the rainwater coming off of the driveways and going down into, uh, uh, down into the streams. Or you break it up in five acre or greater lots. I'm just asking that you consider the possibility that a rural development designed to create a rural environment that would be, uh, good for people who have horses or people who want to have walking trails, et cetera, doesn't really need to have curb and gutter and sidewalks if it's really all about being rural. So, if you can get a developer where you can allow them to cluster the homes on smaller lots, preserve, uh, space for the environment, for nature, and for the people in that subdivision to enjoy, then maybe gravel roads or paved roads without curb and gutter and sidewalk would be appropriate. So, my concern only is that you might be painting yourselves into a corner in the hopes of creating really good development and then possibly leaving out something that could be very creative and, uh, very conducive to a rural environment that I believe Harrelson County offers. I've lived here thirty-three years, and I moved here because of the trees and the streams. So, um, that's all I'm asking, is that you take a look at it and don't necessarily rubber stamp it without allowing for variances for developers like myself, maybe, who want to do something that's a little more in keeping with the county.
Thank you. Have anybody else? Okay. Do you all have any question? Okay, that's the last thing we had on the work session. That's all we had on the work session. We're gonna start into the special call, the reason for the special call. It's first Tuesday in January falls on the second. It's the day after New Year's Day. Uh, we decided to move it up to the sixteenth. I think it's the sixteenth, isn't it?
Yeah.
And, uh, have a special call meeting at the work session on the third Tuesday. So, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, Ms. Couch, you wanna do the invocation, and then we do the pledge of allegiance.
To our thank you for this day, thank you for the freedom to come and do business together, thank you for our county, for our elected officials, for our employees. We just ask that you lead us and guide us, and we pray with those who've lost levelling this week, Lord, that you just comfort them. We thank you for Christmas, and we thank you for your son, Jesus. In his name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due due justice, proper.
Left one spot out with the chairman's report.
Yes.
I'd like at this time to introduce Mr. Zach Smith. He will be gonna stand up. He is our new chief appraisal, the appraiser. The appraisal board has unanimously voted him in, and he will be starting first day of January, second day of January. Okay, he's our new field, not field appraiser, but chief appraiser. He will be in charge of the office, so I'm sure he is willingly waiting your phone call.
Glad to have you, Zach. Congratulations.
Waive the reading of the previous minutes. I need motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the previous minutes.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, show right hand. Approval of the agenda, at this time, I'd like to add item number three, the crisis response team. Something we talked about in previous meetings. I'd like to make that item number three.
And I'd also like to add the, uh, a vote on the approving of the juvenile court, uh, position that was discussed at the, uh, last meeting.
Okay, that was something that was supposed to have been on here. We just failed. Left it off, juvenile court.
Yeah, juvenile court position, yeah.
Anything else? Need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
And a motion is second, all in favor, show right hand. Item number one, rezoning request from Darryl Blake, Harrelson County map, tax map, zero zero three six dash zero zero four three, located on Wyndham Road, present zoning is A one agriculture, proposed zoning is R two residential. We talked about this in a work session. This is dividing some property that one man owned into, uh, two different parcels. Need a motion to approve or deny?
Make a motion to approve.
Second, go ahead.
Second.
And a motion is second, all in favor, show right hand. Motion carry. Item number two is road bid opening. Have you got all the bids?
I sure do. We have one, two, three, six bids this time. The first one is Bartow Paving Company. Mr. Edwards, you could tell which roads this is for? While I hunt the price.
We're not gonna be able to do as many roads, because the Stedman Road is, I think, the longest road in the county, second longest, and, yeah, it's a lot of mileage, so.
That all of Stedman Road, Terry, or is it?
Seven, it's how many miles? How many miles, about seven?
It's just on Stedman.
Yeah, it's just Stedman Road.
And the other road?
Monroe Mill, okay. Yeah, well, there's not as many roads, same mileage, and this put us, this put us over two hundred miles.
What are they doing with that? I know there was some discussion about that bridge on Monroe Mill, too. Has any more been said about that or no?
I'll tell you about that. The highway department has decided safety is a big thing. So, instead of replacing a sixty-year-old bridge on Monroe Mill, they're gonna put crosswalks at the entrance and exits of, uh, I twenty out on the tail of, on one hundred.
For all the foot traffic.
For all the foot traffic that crosses the entrance and the exits. They're gonna spend enough money to replace that bridge to make it safe for nobody to cross the road. Basically what they're doing.
Sounds about right.
That's what happened to the bridge.
Uh-huh. I knew I'd heard about it, and then they went silent.
But they didn't do it without objections.
Okay, the first bid from, the one from Bartow Paving is a total of three million, eight fifty-six, oh sixty-three fifty. We don't have the little tally sheets this time. Second one is Northwest Georgia Paving.
That's one up out of Calhoun, isn't it?
Development authority.
This one's three million, two sixteen, three ninety-five forty. Next one is Blunt Construction Company out of Marietta. Next, the, that isn't right. Sorry, none of these are. Put in here the same either. This one's three million, two fifty-six, eight seventy-four ten. Next one, C W Matthews. This one's three million, one ninety-seven, four ninety-two. E R Snail. This one's two million, nine thirty-eight, three forty-five oh five. And the final one is F S Scarborough.
F F.
F S Scarborough Civil Contractors. I don't believe we've ever had a bid from them. Their bid is four million, two eighty-eight, two forty, forty-nine.
They really won it. Wow. Is there any difference in these bids, Allison? Are they all cover the same thing, same time type thing?
No, it's exact, everything has to be exactly as it's put in here.
Is there any of them that are able to do it quicker or earlier than any of the other ones?
He's putting in the bids.
They're all scheduled, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it's all supposed to happen, like, in the spring, as soon as the weather clears.
Yeah, by May thirty-first or May.
Have we done any work with E R Snail before? I know we just did a bunch with C W Matthews.
Normally, one of them, C W gets it one year, and E R Snail gets it next. They swap back and forth, you, it's just between the two of them, basically.
Terry, I have a, how long, it wasn't that long ago that a mile of paving was like a hundred and thirty thousand. This is all over two hundred. And we're, and we're just doing thirteen miles roughly?
Sixteen.
Sixteen miles, boy, that helps a lot. Uh, I had it down at six.
Sixteen, seventeen miles.
How much does that make it?
Five point six eight and five point seven eight.
Well, I said a hundred and eighty-three, hundred and eighty-four a mile.
These roads are. And they're heavy, they're travel roads, and they're wider than a lot of them we have paved in the past.
It's shocking to me that it's up that much from last year. Wow. Thank you. Yeah, that's what, when I heard the first one, I said, wow, and, and, uh, that's why I was wanting to ask you, when, when did price jump so incredible? Thanks, Terry.
I'll have to abstain from any votes on this for conflict interest, but Terry, do you have any preference between C W and Snail? Is, is, is the job done?
It being pretty long continuous runs on the same road ought to help some, too. You get to chopping it up. Seems like it can take a little longer.
But one thing that hurts us is, uh, they're the furthest away from the, uh, plant, asphalt plant. These two roads, you know, on the north side of Stedman Road, they probably don't truck it any further out of that plant than that. That's one thing that hurts us, you know, it'd be, it'd have been cheaper if it'd been on the other side of the county.
Yeah.
Closer to the plant.
They are highly traveled.
Yeah. We've had both companies. I'm happy with E R Snail.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll make the motion to approve E R Snail, uh, for the paving of Stedman and Monroe Mill.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion? Got a motion and a second, all in favor of E R Snail, right hand? Oh, yes, and one abstained.
I appreciate everything y'all are doing on the roads, Terry. I mean, y'all, y'all are working hard. I talked to a lady the other day who was extremely, she lived over off Old Bush Mill, and she was extremely happy with how far the roads have come over the past few years, so. Yeah, you said this gets as close to two hundred miles?
It's a little over two hundred going to take.
Awesome.
In the last five years, four years.
I'm sure your patch guys appreciate that.
Yeah. We, we used to get three or four phone calls, potholes a day.
Yeah.
And we very seldom ever get one anymore. So, it's made a difference. Item number three is crisis response team. This will, this team will be funded by the opioid money. This is, uh, a settlement with the court cases, with the opioid companies that the county received from the government. I mean, it's, I guess it wasn't the government, it was, uh, the court ruling that, uh, we got three hundred and fifty thousand. It's gonna be a continuous thing over the next fifteen or twenty years. The drug companies are making payments, but it comes with a stipulation. This money's got to be spent on opioid, uh, classes or, or people with opioid addictions, or the training, or in something of that nature. It's got to be spent with something to do with opioid addiction. And we worked out an agreement with U Haven and the Sheriff's Department to have a response team. Uh, everybody that's arrested don't need to be in jail. Some of them need to be in hospitals. And this team, when the deputies go out, they will make a determination whether this team needs to come, talk to the people, and maybe put them in, uh, hospitals, or detox centers, or whatever. And, uh, what I'd like to do to that is get a M O U to let me go ahead and negotiate, finish, final negotiations. This, the preliminary figures, it's gonna be like a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year. That's gonna, uh, pay for one, uh, response person and one, uh, which, they won't be a, a, a regular deputy. This is all they'll do, and work in the jails and training and have, uh, with the champs, you know, they'll work with that, with school resource officers and things. And it, it's like a hundred and twenty-two thousand a year. Don't leave anything else out.
No, it's just we, we need a vote to fund it from the opioid funds, and for you to be able to sign the memorandum once everybody's comfortable, the three different entities are comfortable with it.
Yeah, all that needs to be in a form of a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the crisis response team.
I'll second.
Is that good enough, or does he need to say the whole thing?
About the funding.
Just, let's just say, to clarify, Commissioner Ellsbury is motioning to fund the crisis response team from the opioid funds, and for the chairman to have the authority to sign the memorandum of understanding once the county, the sheriff, and U Haven have it worked out suitably.
That's what you meant to say.
I thought it was.
All of that.
Okay, we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, that a motion and a second, all in favor, show right hand. Okay, motion carry. Item number four, juvenile court position, funding it, I think it was, was it up to sixty thousand?
Angela, or Judge Bice, wanted y'all wanna describe just briefly what we had. Angela, or Judge Bys, wanted y'all wanna describe just briefly what we had.
Right, yeah.
And it was 50 for the case manager. There was the prosecutor and, and the public defender were gonna get the supplement that they usually get for probate court, which I believe was 75 apiece, so that would be a total of 15.
Be a total of what?
15 for the supplements for the, the district attorney and the public defender.
But we're only voting this for tonight to fund it through the end of June?
That would be correct for this fiscal year and then.
And how much is that gonna be for those six months? Did you, was it 15? It's more than that, I know.
No, 15 was the supplement.
So 50.
Both of those were gonna be our employees, right?
Correct.
Okay, so.
It's a 60-40 split?
It is.
So it'd be putting 69,000 in the budget times 40%. Harrelson County's portion of that for the remaining six months would be $27,600. And that covers their insurance and stuff too.
Benefits.
I, I mean, that's not an exact number, but that's the approximate number.
Is Pope County already voted on this?
They vote tomorrow at 10:00.
What we're talking about, this is the Talipus judicial system. It's Pope and Harrelson County. Pope does more business in the courts than we do. They pay basically 60% of the court cost and Harrelson County pays 40. So that's what we're, and it's a joint venture between two counties.
Is this an ongoing program that the state had been funding? And, and from what I gather, our last meeting it was, just all of a sudden they decided they're not going to fund it as of January 1?
Well, sort of. So the CHINS program is created by statute, it was created back in 2013. DFACS created this pilot program around that same time to decide how they wanted CHINS to operate and whether they wanted to pick this program up, because it's called Children in Need of Services. So they, they funded two positions. One was for our circuit and one was for, one was for Barto. But ultimately, within a few years, they decided they did not want to actually take over CHINS. They wanted CHINS to be their own standing program. So all of the local counties are actually funding CHINS amongst themselves and have been since probably 2015, 16. However, DFACS didn't get rid of the programs that they had created through the pilot program until now. Barto has been gone for years, am I right? And so our position here, for our circuit ends January 31st. So it's, it's not something that they have recently decided they're not gonna do. They have long since decided they weren't gonna do it. We just had the longstanding position that we had opening that they're just now terminating.
So these positions, did they already exist then under the old program or they?
They were state-funded positions. Ms. Moore is the court director of the CHINS program. She was a state-funded DFACS employee.
Will we use those same employees to continue on with this program?
We are gonna continue on with the program using Ms. Moore. Previously in the past, no one has ever prosecuted and defended CHINS in our court. Without getting into all the details, it's something that we will have to do once the county takes it over. And so the, I think the most economical way to do that is to get the public defender who's currently practicing in the courtroom and the district attorney who's normally practicing in the courtroom to resume the, assume those responsibilities as opposed to hiring separate attorneys to actually handle that. I think that's the, the cheapest way for the county to do that, the counties to do that.
One thing I'd like to ask and I won't ask anything else. At the end of the six months, I wish we would, I'd like to hear everyone, like to hear, what's been the outcome of the program? Where's the success? Where, what's going on? Uh, are we making, I mean, it's only six months. I know these things are very lengthy and trying to work out, but it would be nice to get a report of how this money is being used and, and the good that it's doing.
The CHINS program has done some great good and I think Mr. Farmer's probably, he's actually been to CHINS court and he can tell you firsthand how, how that works.
Mr. Farmer, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may, I'm, I'm in that program quite a bit, so.
Oh, you're in the program, okay. As, as a lawyer or a participant?
No, well, no. Probably should be a participant, but right now.
The letter that we provided also has all the stats up until this year and this year it has grown dramatically. And I think that that's a good thing, we're getting to kids quicker. But the, the whole idea behind the CHINS program is to, to figure out what the needs are of the children and fix those before it becomes an issue where we have to remove the children from the home or before, you know, they actually commit a crime that the, the state is actually prosecuting and asking for them to be detained for a lengthy period of time. So we, we've done a lot of good in being able to intervene and sometimes we, we find children who are at extreme risk and we're able to, you know, remedy that situation. But I think it has, it's, CHINS is for status offenses. So it's like the children who are having behaviors that's not really a crime yet, but they're headed that direction. So your runaways, your truancy issues, you know, not going to school, unruly behavior, things like that are what we're addressing so that we can try to remedy those situations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the juvenile court position, the allocation of funds for said position.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor, show right hand. Motion carry. That's all we bet on the agenda. Public participation from non-agenda items?
I don't have any more.
Okay. We need a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, show right hand. We adjourn.